Should we call this meeting to order? The meeting of the Town of Auburn School Committee is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of all open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely through Zoom, please use the link posted on the agenda on the town's website. While supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body is available on the town's website, the public is encouraged to follow along with the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. We will create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools, respecting race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability. Do we have any citizen comments tonight? Any special recognitions?
No special recognitions this evening. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'd like to seek approval of the minutes from January 3rd of 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes on January 3rd, 2024.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Does the vote? Student reps?
Thank you. Hello. It's been a little while since I've been here. I've missed it. I don't, surprisingly, I don't have as much to say as you think I would for the amount of times that I miss, but I'm gonna attribute that to Christmas and the snow day, which we were very thankful for. Thank you for that. So, winter sports in full swing. Basketball season. I know I've definitely been to a few hockey games and it's freezing even though it's inside, but it's great. We love it. And speaking of cold, the people who went on the Quebec trip just came back. They left last Thursday and they just came back. I think it was, I'm gonna say Monday. I saw the pictures. It looked super fun, but also freezing. There was a post this morning, actually, about there being maple butter passed out to them. So that, I mean, already sounds great. Today, so the We the People Club is a club that the AP Government Students do, and it's like a speech competition. So later this month, on January 27th, we're going down to the Edward M. Kennedy Center in Boston. It's like a recreation of the Senate. And you go and you give your speech in front of the judges and they have follow-up questions. And we had our showcase for that today. So we had guest judges come in. So past students came in to judge and other teachers. And I know that it made me very thankful that I have this position because public speaking is not easy. But I can definitely tell that I've improved. So thank you so much for letting me speak here. Next on the list, so the Winter Carnival is February 12th to 16th, and it's a week of games and competitions and spirit days. I know one of the things we're all looking forward to is we decorate the halls depending on what grade you're in. That actually gets pretty heated, competition. March 22nd, which seems like forever from now, but signups are starting for the Polar Plunge Unit that's coming to Auburn Middle School. You can sign up to join a team and it benefits the Special Olympic Athletes in Massachusetts. And Mr. Luca is running that, so if you have questions. I know that I have some friends that are doing that. They're in Rockets to Rockets, so they're, they're signed up to be dunked. Let's see. NHS applications just opened for eligible students. The induction ceremony is usually sometime in, in March, which is when all the seniors have to stand on the stage and announce what college we're going to. So that's also nerve-wracking. In the same vein, the yearbook is coming along nicely. That's a pat on my own back right there. No, no, we have, we have, I'm very happy with the turnout. We have all the people. It's, you know, it's been growing since, since COVID. And we have a lot of people that are very dedicated to taking the pictures and everything. We just had superlative voting, so stay tuned to see those announcements. Those will be funny. And to put it all in perspective, cap and gowns are being ordered. So that's, that's the timeline we're working with here.
Wow.
So close.
That's crazy.
Wow.
It goes by fast.
It does, yes.
That was a great report.
Yeah, it was great.
And we missed you too.
Thank you. Yeah, I was sick. Of course, I was over Christmas every year.
Every year.
Keeping up my streak.
Yeah, we should do a school committee team of, let's get dunked.
I'll film it if you need to volunteer for that.
You'd love that one.
I probably have hypothermia.
Sounds fun. Maybe, yeah. I would do it.
Thank you.
As long as I have a hot tub after.
Thank you, Bella.
Thanks, Bella.
Thank you. Have a good night.
And our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. McCrilla. So tonight for our student spotlight, we have some students from Swanson Road Elementary School here with Dr. Lopez. I'll have them all introduce themselves. They're going to present some literacy projects focused on UDL and ELA and writing. So if you come up and have everyone introduced, that would be great.
Thank you for providing us the opportunity to share some amazing writing tonight. I'm Stacy Bergeron, a reading specialist, and this is...
I'm Mara Gordon, grade four teacher.
I'm Caleb Rifkin.
I'm Lila Jermaine.
For about two years, educators in Auburn have been receiving professional development in UDL, Universal Design for Learning. We have been taught to think about the standards that students must master and the curriculum that we utilize to help develop independent readers, writers, and thinkers. When planning our lessons, we must consider the barriers that might prevent students from accessing the curriculum, and we must also consider the choices that we provide students so that they can take ownership of their learning. In Mrs. Gordon's fourth grade classroom, we quickly discovered at the beginning of the year that getting thoughts down on paper was a barrier. So I shared my own writer's notebook from 1989, and they laughed at how old I am, and my current writer's notebook. We began five-minute quick writes where students could write words, phrases, or sentences in their writer's notebooks to share their thoughts about a prompt chosen by the group or their own selected topic. The share-out, questioning, and discussion that followed was the most powerful part. Students became inspired by their classmates' writing and began using techniques learned from modeling and lessons in their everyday composition.
So in our classroom, we implement UDL by offering the kids a lot of choices. So in the choices, we're hoping to get them to buy in, right? So when you have that block, we start with, how do you want to get your thoughts down? iPad, notebook, you decide where you're gonna work best. Check in with your body. Do you need to sit at a desk, on a table, back, you know, the back table, on the floor? Not on the table. That's not really conducive to writing. But, so, the point is, is that we want to empower them with choice. And in doing that, it kind of frees up that block sometimes. So we will often say, okay, we're just, what's gonna work best for you? So in feeling empowered, it gives them a sense of control and they're able to get the confidence they need to share with their peers and their teachers the risk of writing, basically. So Caleb is gonna share with you tonight a writing from the beginning of the year, which was about October, and then where he's able to, to get to in December. So go ahead, Caleb. Share him what you have.
So this was from October in the beginning of the year. I sat in the class. We were writing a personal narrative. Kids were typing or writing in their notebooks and talking to the teachers. I wasn't. I couldn't remember enough to write about. I was playing with the chair, trying to remember something. The thoughts came very slowly. Then I realized I could write about not being able to think of something. Then I wrote this paper. Now, now this is in December. Timmy wanted his whole life to be an athlete, but he had never played any sport for even a year consistently. So he decided to ask his mom if he could join a team. She agreed to let him join and asked Timmy what sport he wanted to play. Timmy thought about it for a while and finally said, I wanna play baseball. Timmy's mom said, if you wanna play a sport, he would have to go to every practice instead of playing video games and participate in every game. Timmy really loved video games, but he knew he would never be an athlete if he didn't dedicate his time to practicing and not playing video games the whole day. So he agreed. Tuesday was his first practice, so he still had two days to play video games. Then when it was Timmy's first practice, he got in the car excitedly as they drove away. He looked out the window and watched the trees fly by as they approached the baseball field. His coach greeted him and gave him his jersey the day, the day before Timmy and his mom went out to buy all the equipment so he was prepared. Timmy's older brother played baseball for five years. In his second year, he was on this team. So the coach knew Timmy very well. Those are the first two paragraphs.
Do you wanna show? So it's really powerful when you look at, so we went over this, but it's really powerful when you look at where he started. You wanna hold on to that for me? Which is this, right? And this took days. This was a struggle. And this started with a five-minute quick write, and he was able to go from there. So giving him some control in, in how he was gonna write it and where he was gonna write it made a huge difference for him. And also, which I also didn't mention, sorry.
No, you're good.
But we also taught them how to peer edit. So in doing that, it gave them the opportunity to work on communicating with their peers, using the right language, appropriate language, you know, could instead of should. And really, I get, learning from their peers about the writing process and encouraging the peers. And they had the choice. Do I wanna meet with a teacher or do I wanna meet with a peer? And that enabled them to really be accountable for what they were doing, right? Because if they were gonna meet with a peer, they had to say, well, this is what we're working on. This is what I need help with. If not just, I wanna go hang out with my friend. So there was definitely a lot of, a lot of choice, but a lot of commitment in the work that happened. And we're so incredibly impressed with all of our fourth graders, but Caleb in particular just, just really grew. And it was great to see. Thanks.
Awesome job.
Caleb. Another amazing writer that we're gonna hear from is Lila. Lila is going to share with us her product of a five-minute quick write, where she was working on the strategy of show the reader, don't tell the reader how a character is feeling. Lessons were taught and writing was modeled to help students understand that writers don't tell readers how characters feel. They show it through sensory details, powerful verbs, and figurative language. She will then read how she took that strategy and incorporated it into her fictional narrative.
Her classroom was as hot as the sun. She had sweat dripping down her face as her eyes turned bloodshot red. As she was working on her test, her clothes started to stick to her skin. She looked around to see if any of her classmates were sweating too, but her eyes were so watery she couldn't tell. Her hair was starting to get wet with sweat as she asked to use the bathroom. She went to wash her face as she started to feel a burn in her throat. She asked her teacher to turn down the heat as she started to get lightheaded. Her teacher said, this is as low as it gets. Lilian had an idea she had never thought about. She was going to go to a new hill, which basically wasn't even touched yet. She thought for a hot minute that digging the hill by herself would be as hard as taming a tiger. She had sweat that dripped down from the sides of her hairline. Luckily, the hill was in shade. She decided that she was gonna have to find someone to help her dig. So she headed to go look and saw someone named Rachel.
So as you can see, the choice that we're giving them, they are, they are growing. They are developing. I definitely did not write that well as my 1989 second grade notebook. Look at all that. The spell, I promise, I've come a long way. But really, it's, it's the fact that they are taking control of their learning. And so thank you for that professional development in the UDL. And thank you for having us here tonight to put a spotlight on them and the other fourth graders in this classroom. They're doing phenomenal. So thank you.
Amazing.
Ask the question?
Yes.
So can I ask you both a question, Caleb and Lila? So how do you feel about writing now compared to how you felt about writing, maybe at the beginning of the year?
I feel way better about writing. Like, at the beginning of the year, I didn't really like it and I wasn't very good at it. But I, like, just a few months later, I felt way better and I am way better at writing.
And I just have to say, Caleb, and this is to you as well, Lila. So when I was a principal, I used to read kids' writing all the time because I loved to and I loved to see how they grew. Never, if I had read any of your writing, would I have thought you were only in fourth grade. So excellent use of language and describing words and helping your listener to see what it is you're writing about. So nicely done to both of you that way. Lila, how do you feel about writing now compared to the beginning?
I feel a lot more confident with my spelling and where I put the period in the sentence. And how I set it up in paragraphs, 'cause they used to be like just two lines of each one.
So you see how the thoughts go together a little bit better. Excellent. Very impressive.
And I just wanted to mention, I think it's really powerful. I think sometimes having taught writing at one, at one point in my career, I think students think that it's this big thing. And so I wanna compliment both of you as teachers in creating the environment where, even your first piece, Caleb, you know, where you were talking about, you were still writing, right? And it's just like getting into that practice. And so I love hearing the progression and recognizing that writing is writing. And so you have that opportunity, you have that original, like yours, Lila. You had that original piece that you then went back and polished. And so I think that sometimes we think that writing has to be perfect right off, right off of the pen, but it takes time. And I compliment both of you and both of your teachers. So that's, that's great.
And I'll also say that if you can be a good writer, you can do anything. Because no matter what you do, you have to write. So nicely done to all of you. Thank you so much. That was fabulous.
Keep writing.
Yep. That was a very good job. You must do quick write every grade because I know one of my boys, when he was gonna be late for school, was very concerned about missing his, his quick write or his writing session. Not recess, he was, I'm gonna miss quick write? So, I mean, the kids love it, I can tell.
And that's what you want.
Yeah. You want them to enjoy writing, which I think you've done. So awesome job. And great job, that writing. I still don't think I can write that well. Me either. Can't do that.
Terrific, really.
I'm gonna come to the next quick write.
Very nice job. So I don't know if you, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Just thank you.
Oh, you're just saying thank you?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. So I don't know, you're all, you don't need to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if the two, the four of you could come up, just give us a handshake and you can be on your way. And we thank you for coming tonight. That's it. Come on up.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Hey, keep writing.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
Keep writing.
Excellent. Nicely done. Fantastic. Very good, Caleb. Great job. Great job. Great job. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Stacy. Nice job.
Great job. That was excellent.
Can I go to basketball?
The commitment.
I go to bed, I go to basketball.
What did you write about?
Yeah, we want, we want a full story for the next...
All basketball related.
Maybe we can do unfinished business after, 'cause I have a little bit to talk about.
Sure.
So that we can, the chief's going to get...
Sure.
Nice job.
Good night. Good night.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good night. Good night. Bye.
All right. So we're gonna switch down to new business.
Thank you. This evening, we have with us Fire Chief Coleman, who's going to give us a brief overview of the updates to the plan for the new fire station in Auburn. He'd been here some time ago to talk about some happenings and he's gonna give us an update on that.
Hi, Chief.
Good evening. Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you for having me. That was great. I always love coming here. It's such a better energy than most of the meetings I attend. I think I found a few of my new future speechwriters. So that was, that was excellent. So thank you for having me. I just wanna provide the school committee with an update on what was the public safety building project that myself and Chief Lemon were here. I honestly don't even know when that was. Probably a year ago, maybe, that, that we were here talking about the plans for a public safety building. And I just wanna kinda walk you through sort of where that project is and where we are as we sit today. So if you remember, the plan was to build a combined police and fire station here on the West Street site. When the estimate came back from the professional estimators, the project came in probably somewhere around $37 million higher than we had anticipated based on a number of things just in today's economy between, you know, inflation and goods and prevailing wage and all of those kind of things. So the estimated project cost for construction alone was $78 million. That did not include debt and interest and that did not include any relocation expenses for either police or the school department. So no one felt good about that, myself included. We just felt that we could not bring a project like that to the voters. It was just way more than we had anticipated it was ever gonna be. That, that project, when we started in 2018, was estimated at about a $40 million project. So it just goes to show you the, the scale of escalation. So at a Board of Selectmen's meeting over the summer, we had presented the public safety concept and we were basically looking from guidance from the board. And with the support of the police chief, and I wanna publicly thank the police chief, you know, for this move, he willingly backed the police department out of this project because everyone, including the Board of Selectmen, the police chief recognizes that the West Street Fire Station is the priority. It's the most, it has the most challenges. I'll just say that at this point. So everybody recognized that that's really where the focus should be at this point. So the board voted to switch gears on the project, remove the police station from the public safety building concept, and focus on the construction of a new fire headquarters only. So over the summer, into the fall, we were still moving forward with that plan here on the West Street site. Many of you were at the Fall Town Meeting in October, when we sought $100,000 for conceptual designs of the new fire headquarters. And you'll sort of remember at the last minute, we made a change on Town Meeting Floor to say that we were seeking money for the, the design of a building on West Street to West Auburn. And that was done because literally about 48 hours before that Town Meeting, we were made aware that the Chuck Steakhouse property, located at 10 Prospect Street, was on the market and they were accepting bids for that property. So in about 48 hours, we pulled it together with Town Council, got some legal opinions. We made the amendment on Town Meeting Floor, which allowed us to pursue sort of the West Auburn concept. We were not prepared at Town Meeting that night to say anything about the Chuck's property because we did not, we hadn't, we didn't have authorization to enter into any sort of negotiation. Shortly after the Town Meeting, myself, the Town Administrator, I'm sorry, Town Manager, we met with the Board of Selectmen in executive session and the board unanimously voted for us to enter into negotiations with the owner of Chuck Steakhouse to purchase that property. Where it sits today, we currently have a signed purchase and sales agreement for that property contingent upon the vote of special Town Meeting, which a special Town Meeting has been scheduled for Tuesday, January 30th, at the high school. There is only one article on the Town Meeting, and that is for the purchase of Chuck Steakhouse for the purchase price of $4,050,000, which the Town Manager, the Board of Selectmen, and the Finance Committee have all unanimously supported taking that money from free cash. We currently have a substantial free cash balance, which they feel they would rather use that instead of borrowing the $4 million. It's, and, and this will be discussed further at Town Meeting, but there's obviously financial advantages to using money that we already own versus borrowing to save on the interest for that. So we'll be, we'll be looking for somewhere between 4.2 and 4.3 because we are seeking a sum of money, not only to purchase the property, but a sum of money to demo the existing building. We do not want the vacant building to sit there. So the plan would be shortly after we sign the purchase and sales and we close on the property, we're gonna move fairly quickly to demolish the building. There will be a sum of money for an environmental study, which will be required to do any borrowing there. And then I feel like I'm missing, no, I guess that's it. Environmental study and, and the demo. So we're ballparking that, again, somewhere between that 4.2, 4.3. We've already had an engineering company out last Friday. We had Ty &amp; Bond out doing an environmental study of the building. And they're gonna be able to pinpoint and really kind of hone in on what that demo number is going to be. So we're not asking for more than we really need to at Town Meeting. So we're anticipating that report probably early next week. So we're really excited about the prospect of this site because, as you know, and a lot of these concerns were raised the night that Chief Lemon and I were here in terms of utilizing this site. And, you know, I'll be honest with you, I've had, you know, private conversations with Dr. Chamberlain. You know, the reality is, is no one was ever really thrilled about this site, you know, to begin with. But the town does not own any land. You know, we, they, we didn't have any options. And any option that we did have to potentially cite a fire station or a public safety building, it was gonna come at a cost to the town to purchase a piece of property. But all the properties that people typically throw out there, it's always the same ones. It's the Yankee drummer, it's Sears Auto. None of those are viable for a fire station only. And honestly, they weren't even that great of locations for a joint public safety building. So moving, having the potential to purchase the, the site at Chuck Steakhouse, which is 10 Prospect Street, to have the potential to purchase that Prospect Street site, it not only grows the acreage in which we'll be able to build, this is a two-acre site as it sits right here. But without, and again, the cost of relocating schools and, you know, the finance people don't like when I say, forget about the cost. But forget about the cost for a second. The disruption to the school department the disruption to the school department over that period of time during construction and relocating. In some respects, you can't put a price on that. And and that was probably going to be more disruptive than it was worth. So to have the ability to look at a piece of property that will be able to construct a new fire station while we stay here in the operation, and then be able to just pick up and move, there's a lot of expenses that will be off the table because of that. The relocation for the fire department alone during construction for, let's say, a two year period is estimated close to five million dollars, just for the temporary housing of equipment, personnel for that construction period. So the fact that we would utilize free cash to purchase the Chuck's property for four million dollars, that eliminates the need to borrow an additional close to five million on top of the construction project. It will allow the school department to stay here. We've had preliminary conversations, but I think everybody is sort of expecting that when, if the new facility is built and we move from West Street to Prospect Street, the town would turn the building back over to the school department for you to utilize in whatever fashion you wanted to, whether it's storage or however you wanted to use it. So the building would be turned back over to the schools. We would not have a use for the property at that point. So when you add up the pros for this project, it certainly outweighs the cons. It basically, it allows the school department to operate uninterrupted, and then you get the majority of your building back, you know, as well at the end. So where we've, within the town, we have an open house that's available tonight, the past last Wednesday, and the next two Wednesdays, we're doing open houses for the public. We've invited town meeting members for people to just come and and see the operations, see the buildings, see the existing conditions. So we're, we're hoping that we're successful on on the thirtieth. I think we're all hopeful that town meeting will recognize the advantages of this and and sort of what it brings to everybody at the table here. And, you know, we would just ask that any support, you know, from the school committee, you know, that that you could lend to support the the purchase of this property or to speak favorably of it, I think it benefits everybody. You know, like I said, no one was ever, including me, no one was ever really thrilled about this site to begin with. But the sad reality is, is for whatever reason, if the Ten Prospect Street site does not pass at town meeting, we're sort of forced to come back and look at, look at West Street again. And I don't think anybody wants to do that. Nobody thinks that this is the best site for it, regardless of whether there's a building here now or not, with with things that have happened on this property over the years with the middle school and, you know, we'd rather not be here. So any support that the school committee could lend in in terms of supporting the purchase of of that property, I think it would go a long way, you know, with town meeting to know that, you know, the schools are sort of behind this move as well. So I'd be more than happy to entertain any questions that you have. There's been a lot going on just within the last, you know, sixty days with this. But I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that the committee may have.
Any questions?
I just want to say thank, I know you worked really hard on all this.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It looks, sounds a lot better.
It does. It's, it's promising. We, you know, we, we hope that it's successful. And, you know, as always, you know, I think everybody knows how to get a hold of me. So if there's questions, you know, after tonight, something that you think about later on, don't, don't ever hesitate to, to get a hold of me.
We wish you well, Chief, and we appreciate the update tonight.
Very good. Thank you very much. Enjoy your night.
Thank you.
Right. All right. The next item is our Director of Food Services, Breann Pulver, is here to share with us some updates on the things that are happening in her department, and we're happy to have her.
Hi, welcome back, at least for me. Okay, let's see if I can do this. I have like notes and all kinds of stuff, but I think I can wing it. Okay, so I had a PowerPoint, but I don't know how that's going to work.
He's going to hold it up.
Oh, fabulous.
Just give it one second.
The man behind the curtain. Hope everybody's well, had a nice holiday, maybe even a snow day.
I think you're good, Breann.
Okay, awesome. Okay, so I don't know if you can see it, but anyway. So since I was here in October, I thought it would be a nice opportunity to do like a mid-year checkup. I have almost been here a year, which is crazy. But anyway, first I wanted to say that we've welcomed three new staff members into our department and two new subs, which is really great. We, knock on wood, are fully staffed, and we have such a great group of women and a very nice gentleman that have been helping us out this year. So I just wanted to mention that, because when I was here in October, we had some staffing woes. We have some equipment repairs and purchasing coming up down the pipeline. Over, what was it, the thirty first, Happy Halloween of October, we had a fire at Packachog in the service line. So since then, I've been working on getting all of our quotes and just kind of figuring out a new service line setup and some tables and such that will just make the whole process just a little bit more streamlined and up to date. We are going to rewire the electricity to accommodate the new service line, which is, I know, it's not as fun for everybody else, but it's a huge deal for me. We are also getting some quotes and drawings up for the renovation at Bryn Mawr this summer. So Joe Fahey and myself and Cecilia have been working together with trying to figure out what kind of equipment we're going to be purchasing. It's going to be a really big deal. We're going to upgrade the refrigeration, the ovens and the service line, and reconfigure the way the students enter into the cafeteria and receive their lunch. So we're removing a wall and removing the current service line. We'll be adding another bathroom, which is huge, and the new refrigeration and freezer unit. So a lot of the equipment is original to the building or is twenty plus years old. So it's just going to be really nice to put in some energy efficient and just more efficient equipment all in all. So we're going to be putting out a formal bid, hopefully in the next couple of months. But we just kind of got some drawings and have somewhat of a plan in place for right now. For professional development, we have some sensitivity training, some serve safe, a serve safe exam, and a choke save and AED training coming up between now and the end of the school year. Let's see. For the farm to school, we've partnered with the Worcester Food Hub, and we're going to be using that to deplete our farm to school grant that we received at the beginning of the school year. Since we last met, we have highlighted some Auburn maple syrup. We are going to be doing some winter greens over the next month and still kind of supporting our local apple producers until they're out of cold storage. So that's what we have going on there. And then National Nutrition Month plans. We are looking in the department to survey some students. So I took the opportunity to survey my staff over the last couple of weeks. And we will be doing a variety of different ways of surveying the kids. The elementary school students were looking at doing stickers, did you like this, did you not like this, was it a maybe? With the middle school and hopefully Swanson doing some sort of more like formal survey. Our managers have been doing some table talk. So you know how you go to fancy restaurants and the manager always says, oh, how are you liking your meal? We have been doing that with the kids. And I tell them, I'm like, you got to talk to them when they're not eating, you know? You don't like that, why are you doing it to them? But we're trying to get some feedback from the kids. We've menued quite a few new items. The biggest hit was the vegetable and chicken dumplings. We have been serving them with fried rice along with some orange chicken or General Tso's chicken. We've switched our pizzas. We've been doing some personal pizzas and some different brands of sliced pizza, which have oddly enough gone really well. We are going to bring back our French bread pizza by popular demand, so we make it in-house, and the kids seem to really like it. With that, we are also going to bring back the tower gardens. I have two of them in my office that like I need to do something to make me and the kids happy with. So Kim, the Assistant Director, and myself are going to start the seeds after February break. And then, once they're mature enough, we'll put them in the middle school just to kind of have out during lunchtimes for the kids to kind of take a peek at. And then if we have some sort of a substantial crop, we'll do something fun with it. I'm a big gardener, so whatever I can do to make children happy by the growth of plants is all, I'm all about it. And then Mr. DeLongchamp and I were just talking today. I'd like to do a food show at the Auburn High School. I have set up right now, hopefully, three vendors that'll come in and give the students items that we are currently serving from that vendor and a new item that I'd like to bring in that we haven't used from that vendor. And just get some feedback for the students that way. And then lastly, we had guest servers from October to now. Packachog just started their guest servers today. They'll run for the next month. We had a sign up and we have two parents every day for the next month, which is going to be really nice. We had a tremendous outcome at Bryn Mawr. We had somebody there almost every day from October to winter break. The positive outcome that we got is the parents of students that came were not previously bringing lunch, and now they're get, not, they were previously bringing their own lunch, and now they're getting lunch from us. So that's a huge win for us, like I was doing the happy dance. I, I think it's great that the students are starting to take advantage of the program, especially since, you know, we're all kind of feeling it these days and just to know that your kids have the opportunity to have breakfast and lunch with us. It makes me happy, and I hope that it makes our families also happy. We are going to highlight hopefully some proteins too over March and April. No problem. Okay, so if I can just go to my next, woo, sorry.
One second, Breann, sorry.
Okay, fabulous. Okay, so now I just wanted to go to my second slide. I am terrible at verbally saying numbers, so I just wanted to present them, but I'm going to do my best. So the average participation, I'd said it right, year to date, we've had eighty five school days. Breakfast is thirty three percent and lunch is sixty one percent. Those are really great numbers. Last year, we were closer to twenty four percent for breakfast and only in the low fifties for lunch. So we've seen almost a ten percent increase since the universal free meals was passed here in Massachusetts. That's huge for me, especially, you know, my first year, but also for the students here in Auburn. So at any given day, we are serving at least sixty percent of them lunch. Those are, those are fairly good odds. And so we're going to start rolling out a program just to kind of like touch base on that, how I want to engage all families and all students that we're going to offer. What it, what was, it was a fun name that was, oh, home lunch enhancers. So if you have a student that's not interested in the main entree, they don't have to take that. They can take a fruit, a vegetable, a milk, a roll, something like that. The program at lunch only requires you to take three out of the five items. So if you take a fruit, a vegetable, and a milk, just to enhance your home lunch, that counts as a reimbursable meal. And it also gives the students and the families the opportunity, because produce is is a very expensive part of our, our home life. So it gives the students the opportunity to do that. And almost at all levels, we're offering some sort of bagel or breakfast type meal as well as an offering. So if they wanted to take a yogurt and a fruit and a milk, they, that meets all of the the needs to take a free meal. So that's how we're trying to bump up our breakfast and lunch counts, is that we'll have them in little to-go bags. And our friends that are not typically fond of taking a lunch, a whole meal, which might be a little too much, they can take these things and use them for snack or use it to enhance their, their lunch or breakfast as well. So these are the numbers. Please don't make me say them out loud. But I just wanted to kind of give you an idea. Our highest performing school right now is the high school. A lot of that has to do with our pre-K participation. A lot of our students are taking advantage of using, taking a breakfast or lunch. They also have the highest enrollment, so we would like to see that. Auburn Middle School, I have never seen so many kids eat. It's so great. They're so loud, but they're so great. They come in and they're so enthusiastic about taking their food and getting and eating lunch and and even breakfast. The line is through the door. We're, we're feeding over three hundred kids at the middle school here for breakfast, which is huge. They are definitely our winners when it comes to that. And Bryn Mawr and Packachog, they're holding it steady. They're, they're our reliables, old reliable. So that's kind of what's going on. I just wanted to give you kind of an update of where we're going, where we've been. Show you my beautiful face again. But yeah, so that's really it. Does anybody have any questions? I know that I like to leave before I give you the opportunity to ask any questions.
Through the chair, you mentioned the long line. How long does it take kids to get through the line?
It's great. So from the time that they walk into the cafeteria to the time that they're seated into their chair is about forty five seconds.
Wow.
And the time that they enter.
So that's for breakfast?
Yeah, that's for breakfast. And then, so we have like almost three hundred kids fed in about eight to twelve minutes. Yeah, and so that's similar to all of the other schools as well. At Swanson, we have the grab and go carts for breakfast, and we get all of those kids, about two eighty to three hundred of them fed into their classrooms in a fifteen minute window. For lunch, it's even faster. So they're only given like twenty one, twenty two, twenty five, depending on the school, minutes for lunch, and they have enough time to get their lunch, sit down, eat, and conversate.
We've worked closely with Mr. Desto.
Okay.
To kind of work on those lines.
Yeah.
Yeah, he, he's so, they're so efficient at the middle school. They have the kids that are out in the hallway, come in first, and then the ones that are in the cafeteria go second. And, and they, they do a really great job of of funneling those kids in.
Yeah, so they've worked so that, to try and give them as much time as they can.
As they can to eat, yeah. Yep, and nobody's really complained too much about the, the lines. I think I try to let the kids and the staff know, I'm like, okay, so if it took me less than thirty seconds from the time that I walked into the time that I'm leaving the line, I mean, if you give them those odds, I mean, where else are you going to get a meal that quick where you get to decide out of five entrees, I want this. It's served to you, you punched in your number, and you've left the line. You know, so, I mean, I try to be realistic and put some things into perspective while I think that, yes, it could go faster. But I mean, we're doing, we're doing fairly decent.
Because they do chat too with the kids.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, we have to, we have to remind them, can you please take a fruit or vegetable, thanks? But all in all, the kids are great. They behave through the lines. The staff has been really great. I, I really, we've come a long way, I would have to say, even since October.
That's great. That's fantastic.
Through the chair, my daughter will argue with you that ketchup is in fact a vegetable, so everyone knows.
Got in trouble for too many ketchup packets.
Yes, condiments are a kid's best friend. I will, I will never, I'll never disagree.
Isn't tomato fruit?
Tomato is, so it's a fruit. So she is taking a fruit when she takes an extra like seventy packets of ketchup.
Girl up to my own heart, I can't judge her.
You'll have to watch her when she gets to high school.
Yeah, oh, my God, with the bulk condiments, we're, we're in trouble.
Well, thank you so much for.
Thank you.
Thank you. Feel free to leave if you don't want to hear all the rest of the fun.
That's right. You are free to go.
Love to have a toddler at home.
Go home.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Good night. All right, up next, we have Mr. DeLongchamp is here to speak about the Auburn High School Program of Studies. We've revised the timeline on this a bit, and we've put a little pressure to get it done a little earlier this school year so that we're prepared for, you know, the kids who begin to enter and talk about going to high school in the spring, that this will be ready for them. So I'll let him share his updates.
Tough hacks to follow tonight. Two talented fourth graders, right, and then a fire department. And then, what are we talking about? Homemade pizza, so. So I have some riveting Program of Study changes to share with all of you. And I'll go through with just off of the change page, and I'll just take them one by one. And please feel free to ask any questions. So the first one was to add responsible citizenship, which we've been, that's been part of our curriculum for the last couple of years, and to have that as a graduation requirement. The reason being, to give you an idea, this year, I believe we have roughly like a hundred and thirty five students out of like a hundred and seventy something that are, sorry, that are taking, that are taking the course. And I just feel like, or we feel like, there's just so much relevant material in there that can help any pathway. Doesn't matter whether it's going off into military, going off into the workforce, or going off to college. There are just some real life skills that are being taught in that room that can really help, whether it's effective communication skills, budgeting, managing money, the pitfalls of credit cards. There's just some really, really good stuff that are happening. And it's a one trimester course, and there are ways for us to easily insert that in and get as many of our students that course before they leave us. So that's the first change. Excuse me. The next one is, it's just, it's more language based. So concert band elective has always been in our Program of Studies. And what we've added was, we've had activity band over the course of this, this school year, and we wanted to make sure that that was part of the requirement for the course, that you were part of the activity band. Updated hip hop and social justice elective descriptions. So that's just refining descriptions. As you know, any of our courses were con- As you know, any of our courses, we're constantly making little subtle changes and we just wanted to make sure that our handbook was most reflective of what we're actually teaching in the classroom. Learn to jam. This is a brand-new course and this is anything from percussion to keyboarding, believe it or not, teaching somebody that maybe hasn't sung formally, how to sing. Definitely not a place where I could perform very well at all, but a fun class. And we're hoping that the diversity within the course and the fact that you're going to be going over so many different possible areas, that it's gonna capture more students' interest. Geometry. So we are, so our freshmen, as I've come and report before in the past, all have algebra for three trimesters, so the whole, the whole entire year. And we've seen great benefits from the fact that we've been able to slow it down, do more reinforcement in the classroom and just be able to, I blame the chief because usually this is way down. I was so happy that he moved this up. And this allows us to be able to kind of circle back and try to get to some areas that might have been more troublesome for kids. And a lot of conversation has been had over the last couple of years of how to support that group of students who might just take a little longer, who might need some additional supports within the geometry course. So to take the course and to kind of, we're still trying to figure out, the math team, Ms. LaMarisa, our department chair, and I are trying to figure out what that's gonna look like. So it's definitely a work in progress for us and I'll be able to report more back in the future. But something we're excited about. Fundamentals of History course. So we have several fundamental courses in our handbook that we've had in the past. And we've always had the fundamentals of English, but within the fundamentals of English course, we've always had fundamentals of history. So they pair the two courses together to talk about current events, say, for example, as a topic. And they'll do writing through current events as part of that course. So it's a three-trimester course, but both English concepts as well as the history concepts are taught within the course. This next one is more language-based. So students who have IEPs, or some students who have IEPs, have as part of their plan, an academic support period. So this would meet three trimesters during the school year. But what we've run across with our Bright program is that we have some students that might need that support block and we were calling it the same thing and it was getting confusing with the number of courses. So our academic support will be purely for our special education team and our student support will be for our Bright team. So it was just more of a clarification than anything else. The next, the next one is kind of the same thing. We went from Unified PE to Unified Wellness. So our PE is our wellness team and they just thought that it encompasses the course better than just the PE. So Unified Wellness might not, might only, not only do some of the physical activity, but more learn about some of the health-related concepts around the physical activity. Let's see, almost done. The Project Enterprise. So we've had a lot of success this year with the revamping of our enterprise program. And so our enterprise program, just to go backwards a little bit and give you a little bit of insight, is a specialized program for students who might just need a different approach. It's, we have English, math, science, social studies, and foreign language classes that meet over the course of the year. Within the classroom, we have a dedicated teacher as well as a counselor that supports the students. We also have electives to go along with it. And so when we took a look at the previous Program of Studies, it didn't really reflect exactly what we were doing. It might have reflected a model that we had previous. So we wanted to make sure that we updated and you'll see language in there that updates and mirrors kind of what we're doing now and the direction we're going. One thing though, as we were going through, there was an omission of our Rise and Evolve program. And I don't know how it happened, but it's not in there. So what we want to do is, we want to get that language back in and then at a subsequent meeting, I'd be happy to come back and share the enterprise or the Rise and Evolve program description with you as well as some of the electives that are attached to it. That won't take very long at all. It's already done. It just never made it into this book. And maybe we were just working too quickly. So I apologize. Would you have any questions?
No.
Through the chair, just, you might, for the school committee, Mrs. Holloway is still listed. So sadly, you'll have to change that.
Oh, we will make that change. Thank you.
It's me now.
It's me.
I'll make sure it gets in there. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I just want to know when I can come take a couple of classes. Very interesting.
Yeah, you're always welcome for a nice tour. I need to sit in.
I want to sit and listen.
Just having a conversation about this responsible citizenship with my husband.
Yeah. When do they teach about taxes? I'm like, we do.
We do. I mean, there's been so many things that we, I think we forget that, like I have students that they don't know how to change attire. I know we don't necessarily teach that in this class as much as that would be fantastic. But the things that I know I grew up learning, that it would, like stitching my pants. I would, that'd been something I would have been able to do as well as like make and prepare my own food. And I, not every student is aware of those things, never mind budgeting and finance and how to allocate time and understand procrastination and becoming more resilient. And I think those are all threaded through the course and super helpful. So I'm excited about that.
It's a great idea.
Great, great idea.
Bella, Bella mentioned something too earlier. Public speaking is something that we're talking about too. I just think it's a hard skill, life skill, that I think is forgotten. Kids are great with their thumbs, looking down, but face-to-face is a harder concept. That version of Bella is so exciting to see, having gotten a chance to see her over the course of the four years. And the confidence and how personal she is able to speak with all of you. Not every student can do that right now. So I think it's important that we start to take a look at some of those skills and try to weave them in to make sure that if we have room in their schedule, to get them those courses. So we're working on it.
Absolutely. That's fantastic.
Love this.
Thank you.
And part of the reason for having this on this evening, we do have this as an action item. I know you may not have had a chance to review the entire document, but really the changes for the most part are minor and they are have, you are having an evening, right?
Yeah.
For incoming freshmen at the end of month.
So January thirty-first, it completes, so we had some transition that we, that we had in place over the last few years for our eighth graders going into ninth grade. But something that was, after surveying families of ninth graders, something that was missed was the communication with the family in person. And for them to meet our team, for them to meet me, to learn more about like, you know, why can't we see all these courses in your Program of Studies? How come my son or daughter can't have all those electives in their freshman year? They wouldn't know unless we tell them, right? And so in the past few years, we've taken notice the fact that, I guess, they've had to rely on their fourteen-year-olds or thirteen-year-olds in some cases, which as we all know, can be a little bit suspect at times depending on what was going on during some of our meetings with kids. So our hope is on January thirty-first, that for a couple of hours, we're able to give them a pretty good taste of what Auburn High School culture, our expectations, and just a little bit about what it takes and what you're gonna need to do in order to go from eighth grade to ninth grade. So I'm hoping it connects the dots and then it'll go along with our step update we have in June. And then in August, we have an orientation where the families can actually take their students around the building to go see their schedules. Their schedules are released around that time. And I think that whole picture should make people feel a little bit more easy about coming into the high school. At least that's the plan. So we're excited about that.
Through the chair, what time on January thirty-first?
Boy, I'm gonna say, I want to say six o'clock.
May or may not have an eighth-grade nephew, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Oh, I'll take, entertain a motion to approve the Auburn High School twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five Program of Studies.
I'll make a motion to approve the Auburn High School twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five Program of Studies.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
You have a good night.
Very much. That's, thank you, Dan.
Good night.
Those classes look so interesting. That's gonna be really helpful for them to have at the end of the month. We'll make those, once he writes up the bit and brings forward the Rise and Evolve piece, we'll obviously share that with you. That was never in the Program of Studies, so that's why it was never carried forward. And they realized that's like, why isn't that in there? It should be. So, yes.
And all the changes are highlighted. It's awesome.
Yeah. Yeah, inside the document. It makes me want to go back and take classes. It looks so, some of these, like.
The options are just amazing.
That's great.
I did confirm, by the way, that it's six o'clock.
It is, okay. My nephew after this?
That's great.
All right, next, do you want to continue with new business or?
Yeah, then we'll go back. The next item on the new business is, is just for the committee to approve the continuation of school choice for the twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five school year. This has been a very successful program in our school district. I think primarily due to the thoughtfulness that you've all given to where and how we welcome students into the buildings so that we don't overwhelm any one school or grade. So I think that's been really important. We don't do that piece of this quite yet. We will do that later in the spring as we have a better understanding of what our potential enrollment will be for next year. But at this point, we do have to have you take a vote to say that we wish to continue this for the coming school year. And as we have historically done, we have opened this up only to Auburn High School and Auburn Middle School because our elementary schools tend to be fairly, right now, we have some very good class sizes that I think we're gonna look to maintain. So I welcome any questions about that issue.
Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make, oh, you got it. Okay. I'll make a motion to continue the school choice program in the Auburn public schools, at the Auburn High School and Auburn Middle School, with the actual number of open school choice slots to be determined in March after reviewing demographic data more closely.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And the next item, you have a sheet in your packet that outlines a cost comparison for area before and after-school programming. As you know, we have very successful programs at actually the preschool, Packer Chog, Bryn Mawr, and Swanson Road School. So before and after care for our students. You will see that this data shows that our pricing is comparably low to other area districts and asking for the committee to consider an increase in this. We do use this funding to offset our utilities in each of the buildings where the programs take place, along with obviously, they support the funding for the salaries for those who work there. We bring in programming. There are certain days we send out for pizza if they're here, like on a half-day, we'll do that. So it's used to, and we also buy materials and art, you know, craft activities and all of that. But as you can see, you know, the average for the, for the places that we compared to is nine forty-nine a day for the morning program. We're currently at six dollars. That program is about an hour and a half in the morning. Kids can come in at seven. They start about eight-thirty with a little bit of variation there. The after-school for three hours, right now, we charge twelve dollars. The average is eighteen. I did put in the recommended motion, twenty dollars for after-school. I'm willing to talk about that, but it seemed like an hour and a half and three hours, the time is doubled. So it would kind of make sense proportionally for it to be ten and twenty dollars. And I think we're still within a reasonable amount of money for families that access that programming. So I'd welcome any questions you might have.
No one likes to see increase, but I think it is absolutely needed at this time, so.
We've not increased in a very long time. We made a minor tweak by about twenty-five or fifty cents, I think, maybe three years ago, but that was a very, very minor change. I think we continue to work on the programming with what students can access during that time. It's so convenient for families, but nonetheless, it does take a toll on our buildings and with, with all of that, so.
Through the chair, I think that, like as a parent that uses it in the mornings, and I use it three days a week, it is incredible. I love that Swiss, they help them with their homework and then my daughter is just active at PACT, she's active. And you can't pay a babysitter that little for three hours. So I think that it's definitely like, as Brooke said, you know, it's not, no one wants to hear an increase, but I think that it is warranted at this point. You know, it is low and looking at this, it's like, you know, it's something that has to be done. I mean, even daycares, like if you look at, if you were to bring this up against daycares, like it's still amazingly low compared to that, so.
If this goes through, will it go into effect immediately or next school year?
I think we would be looking at this for next school year. I don't think we would adjust things now.
Yeah, I mean, the cost of materials alone has gone up so much that when kids can still have stuff to do.
Yeah, and since it is a, you know, it is a big change, I would not want to drop that on families right now.
Yeah.
You know, now we can begin to, because fairly soon, it's hard to believe, we'll be looking for people to start enrolling like in bus transportation and all that again, along with satellite and Galaxy. And so it'll be, give us the time to get the word out to families and let them know that, that this is coming. And I think that's fair to give some, some warning about that.
Yeah, I think it gives enough time for parents to prepare.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Will there be assistance for people, for families that might edge out? With the twenty dollars a day, that's a hundred dollars a week, that's four hundred a month. Some families that utilize it every day, four hundred, that's a paycheck. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
I just.
So we do make accommodations for families who need help financially.
Yep.
Yep, on a regular basis.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was still like a.
Yep.
And just to kind of point this out, you know, for families that are using it all week, it goes from ninety dollars per week to one fifty. So it's a sixty-dollar difference per week. Just, it doesn't, you know, in the scheme of costs rising, and they feed them a snack too. So the cost of things rising, you know, I think it is warranted.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to increase the rates for satellite and Galaxy to ten dollars per day for before-school care and twenty dollars per day for after-school care.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The next item in your packet is the, is a draft twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five school year calendar. It's amazing to me how all of a sudden this time of year, we're already talking about next year in such a, in so many ways. We did make some adjustments compared to this year's calendar. So you will see that this November, on November fifth, will be a presidential election. And while I've not been in this position for a presidential election, I don't think, over in this office, it does create issues at the high school.
To have school.
In a day like that.
It does.
And so what we're going to do is we've, we're presenting that as a professional development day. We've already obtained a very well-renowned speaker, Brian Mendler, who's going to come and present to all of the staff in, at Auburn Middle School on that day. So we already figured out that we can fit everyone there and it's really gonna be an exciting day. So that's one big change. We've kept the two professional development days at the start of the year. We did keep in five half-days and I know there was a lot of discussion about this last school year as being a lot for families. We continued with the exception of November twentieth to try and attach those days to a Friday or to a holiday to give families that little bit more time on the weekend and not disrupt their week. And in lengthy discussions with principals and administrators, we really need those five days. One of them is parent conferences. The day in the spring is primarily for student placement for the next year. So that really gives you three afternoons for really professional learning along with the full days. So I am asking for the committee's support if you so choose to provide that. And the one other thing that was a little bit disappointing, if you look at December for that year, Christmas falls on a Wednesday. So if we back that up, you can't, the day before Christmas Eve would be very difficult to have any kind of school on Christmas Eve. And then to have school on that Monday, I'm not sure that we would have a very good turnout for students on that day. And so given that, then it brings us to not returning to school till January second, which is a Thursday. I've gotten some positive feedback from staff about having that day back as a professional development day and most families, when I surveyed them, like that as well. But if we have a professional development day on Thursday, we're not gonna have kids come in for one day on Friday. So it's just the way it falls. I think that's kind of the way we're gonna have to gauge it. It's a little bit of a moving target with what makes sense to use those times based on when the holidays and the breaks fall. So other than that, it stays much the same and I welcome any questions you might have.
Questions to the chair. What was the reasoning for the twentieth not being on that Friday? November twentieth being a half-day on a Wednesday?
Yeah, so that would be parent conferences.
Okay.
And, and actually, now that you bring that up, so this, there's another variable to this. I'd put it in on a Wednesday because we've had Wednesday faculty meetings. But in discussions with the AEA, well, we may be moving. But in discussions with the AEA, well, we may be moving faculty meetings to a Tuesday, so that may have to shift to the shift to the Tuesday. What it allowed is we use that time for conferences in the afternoon as well.
Gotcha.
Right? So that was why it's it's a midweek kind of thing.
Okay. And as I said, the only big thing I would request is as many satellite days available to families as possible would be great. It sounds like no one's complained to principals about all the half days, so. As long as we can try to cover some satellite galaxy, that would be great. But other than that, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, we can do that. And it did work out that we were able to do it twice this year.
Through the chair, you're missing that day that Principal Stanek wants in April, where she has the kindergarten or has no no school.
Oh, you're right.
The screen. I get to do it this year. I just want to make sure that everybody gets that opportunity.
You're right. We will set that date.
Yep.
All right, I'll make those couple of adjustments and I can bring it back for a final approval if you like, or I did leave it as information because I didn't know if you're going to want some time to look at it based on conversation for last year.
We'll have to know about the Tuesday anyway, right?
Yeah.
So we'll have.
Okay. So I'll bring it back in February with a final draft.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, should we move back up to old business?
Just go back a little bit to old business. So this is going back to the field trip policy draft. Find my copy of it. So. Yeah, I got it. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out because I did, I've read it through a bunch of times. On the second, the second page toward the bottom. I went and I double checked that link again. That needs to be updated. That SAFER should not be there in order for it to bring you to the appropriate page where you can put in the the Department of Transportation number to check on a carrier. So I want to correct that. And I also on page, it's in red on the page. Where it says secure appropriate insurance information parental permission, then it says determine that all insurance required has been secured. Travel insurance determined by us is mandatory. I sent this out to our attorney. I've not gotten an answer back. I don't know if we can make it mandatory.
Okay.
I don't know if we can do that. I know in the past with situations like, for instance, when we first started with iPads, it was that it was mandatory to get insurance and that's not legal for us to mandate that. So before we go much further, I'm going to just put this off one more time so I can get an answer on that. And I'm also working on an updated permission slip that I'll have at the next meeting as well, so that we can have that all in one batch.
Great, perfect.
It's a tricky, there's a lot to this policy. I think it's going to serve us well, but there's there's a lot to it.
So we're not going to vote.
We're not going to vote right now. No, I want to wait till I have that answer before we before we do that.
All right, teaching and learning.
Okay. Yes, I do have a little something for you to to look at and hopefully it's not my seat sinking down. So on November thirteenth through the fifteenth, we had four teachers and myself go to Casco Bay High School in Portland, Maine. This was a an opportunity presented by the Department of Ed in their weekly email to us that schools districts across Massachusetts have the opportunity to apply for a grant. And after talking to Dr. Chamberlain, we decided to apply and were able to be part of this group. So we were one of six communities from across New England that went to this public school in Maine. And so essentially what what drew us to this opportunity, and you heard it tonight when when Ms. Bergeron and Ms. Gordon were talking about UDL. So we've been on this UDL path. This is year three. And and Casco Bay has been doing, they don't call it UDL, but essentially it's it's that concept. It's project based learning. It's giving kids options and opportunities. And they're in their twentieth year of doing so. So it's expeditionary learning. And so what I want to show you or just I just have a couple of pictures here, but oops, do I? I don't know what to do with this thing over here.
Slide it down.
Oh, there we go. Okay. So they have you know, they, so you saw on the calendar that Dr. Chamberlain presented, you know, at the bottom, we talked about rigor, relevance and relationships, and Casco Bay has a similar mindset. So so, you know, rigor, you know, having a respectful level of challenge and persistence that they ask students to take part in. Students are asked to push to attain and surpass their personal best. Their habits of, they have habits of learning as well as academic achievement. Students are asked to present and defend significant learnings. They learn from mistakes and persevere, and each student prepares a college application, whether or not they're going to college. They are required to apply and put that together, and they feel like that's a big part of who they are and what they want to do. So in this in this particular slide, you can see on the left hand side, after we would spend each day at Casco Bay at the high school, meeting with students, meeting with staff, we would then go back to the hotel and have conversations, both our little group from Auburn. But then we would also meet with, we'd do job alike. So, you know, obviously as assistant superintendent, I was meeting with other assistant superintendents or teachers or meeting with other teachers, and they were even broken down into departmental levels. So you can see Mr. Adams and Ms. Vecchio, and I think Ms. White is in that picture as well. On the right hand side, they make very deliberate presentations of kids and kind of these outwardly moments where it's on the right hand side, it's their moving on up poster. So when a student is accepted into a college, they put their name up there and what college, the colleges they've been accepted into. And again, really just trying to promote that as a possibility, not that every kid is going to go to college, but it's important that they show that. So relevance, why are we doing this? That's a big part of who Casco Bay is, is not just teaching for the sake of teaching, but why are we learning these things? They have clear and important learning targets for each of their lessons. We have the opportunity to go into classrooms and see every subject and how it's being taught. And it's a very unique learning environment in that it's not a lot of kids in rows. That's it's kind of an open, has a kind of a workshop model where kids are all working on something at their level, pursuing something that's connected to the community. And we'll talk about that next. But community is a big part of of who Casco Bay is, is connecting to whether it be the harbor or the community. And here, Ms. Ballway is meeting with a group of students. So they go on these learning expeditions where they pursue a particular area, bringing it together. And they they then have the opportunity to present it in front of adults. And so we are part of that community, and that's a regular part of what Casco Bay does is presenting to students and sharing, presenting to teachers rather, and getting feedback. And so we all were invited to give feedback on those particular assignments. Relationships is a big part, and this connects to, you know, what the high school is currently doing. So you know that they have communities at Casco Bay. They call it crew. And so on the left hand side, there's pictures where we were invited into classrooms to see what kinds of things happen as part of crew. Kids are part of their crew for four years and they stay in those same groups all four years. On the right hand side, that is where we were actually sitting in on crew and had an opportunity to listen to kids. And it's it's run by it's run by students. You know, the freshman year, the teachers can lead it and facilitate it and develop those skills. And then by the senior year, the kids are running it pretty much themselves and the teachers are you know, guiding on the side a little bit where they need to. But for the most part, it's it's a really positive experience. And one of the things for those of you that are familiar with advisories, you know, one of the things that always has struck me is sometimes you have kids in those that don't say anything, that don't speak up and and you wonder like what the impact is and and a lot of.
Can you go to participants and then you can mute them all?
Yep.
Oh, my God.
So one of the things that we, you know, that they talked about as part of this is that that students who never said a word in advisory all four years, at the end of their, at the end of their senior year, they all have an opportunity to to say something about their school. And they talk about how how the the crew or the advisory has impacted them. And so it's kind of a reminder of just because a kid is sitting there and not really participating all that much, they're taking that stuff in. So that was that. And then at the end, we had the opportunity, students, several students as well as all the adults that were there to to connect. And we connected quite a bit over those two days. So one of the things that we're doing, the four teachers and I, meeting with Dan and Melissa and sharing and talking about what is doable, like what our next steps are and how we continue to move forward and build what Auburn High School is already doing and integrate some of these pieces. So.
That's amazing.
Yeah, it was a great, that was a great opportunity.
That sounds like a lot of fun.
It was. It was a lot of fun. It was great learning. And I said to the teachers after.
If we can go back, we can find, if we can just get that person out. Scroll down. You can find, there's just one who is not, if you go up a little bit more. Well, they must have muted themselves. I just couldn't tell who it was. Oh, no.
You see it?
I think we just need to remove the visitors, quite frankly.
Yeah, because I can't tell who it was.
And I don't think I, I did this last time and then I don't think I, it might, maybe.
No, they can unmute themselves.
If you could make that a.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
There you go. Like to apologize to the whoever's watching.
That's very disappointing.
So at any rate, you know, what is, what the teachers and I talked about is that sometimes I have gone to professional development and I hear from teachers who might say, you know, this is great, but this doesn't work in our school. And not once did anybody say that. And it was, it was something that we're talking about and and connecting to Auburn like like Casco Bay has connected to Portland. So it's it's an exciting opportunity as we move forward.
Will this be an every year thing or just?
No, I mean, there's opportunities. So the organization that did this, they had a grant. And so we were able to do that. I don't know. There might be an opportunity in the future. Mr. DeLongchamp was supposed to join us but wasn't able to. And so that's something that we talked about as we move forward. But yeah.
Don't look at the comments.
But at least we'll know who it is.
I love the, I love the idea of that crew, that like you can start as freshmen and be with that group and you get comfortable. And I think that's important.
Through the chair, our high school does that. They call it communities and it's great.
I love that idea.
Amazing.
Who's Janie? Jason?
I don't know.
I don't know who that is. See that one? Drag that thing out of the way.
Hang on, I'm going over here.
Just remove?
Yeah. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we were, what was great about it was, you know, much of the travel and their ability to go was funded. So it didn't cost us anything to have them go for those few days. So it's very very unusual professional learning opportunity that you get to do it like that and have it be, you know, so supported.
Great opportunities.
And I think the folks that went were very pleased to be there.
Yes, very much so. Yes.
I was a little jealous, honestly, of Casco Bay.
We worked hard, but it was it was a great experience and we were fed well too. I didn't include the pictures of us eating.
Ten years to like do something.
Yeah.
Like that, right there, that's a W, right?
No business and financials tonight?
Not this evening, no.
And we do need executive session?
Yes, we do.
I'll make a motion to move into executive session.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the bargaining positions with personnel that could be compromised if discussed in open session. We will not return to open session.
I'll second.
We'll call home. Stop?
Aye, yes.
Yes.
Yes, you are.
Yes.
All right, it is a vote. Yes.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.